Proud of this commission, just to watch them.
Read something, you know.
Need it, we should get a raise.
Yeah.
And they're making all the money.
Good morning, everyone. Welcome to the Wednesday, June 27th, 2018 Tulare County Planning Commission.
That's great.
Go ahead and do roll call, please.
Gong.
Yes.
Millies.
Yes, here.
Elliot.
Here.
BS.
Here.
Whitlatch, Commissioner Whitlatch is absent. Patigliano?
Here.
Aguilar?
Here.
Let's stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. At this time, members of the public may comment on any item not appearing on the agenda. Under state law, matters presented under this item cannot be discussed or acted upon by the Planning Commission at this time. For items appearing on the agenda, the public will be invited to make comments at the time the item comes up for Planning Commission consideration. So that all interested parties have an opportunity to speak, any person addressing the Planning Commission may be limited at the discretion of the Chair. In order to be considered by the Planning Commission, testimony on public hearing items must be given at the time scheduled for the public hearing. At all times, please use the microphone and state your name and address for the record. Is there anyone wishing to make a comment? Not? As a courtesy to those in attendance, please turn off or place your, in alert mode, your cell phones. And if any of you still have pagers, I don't know why, but do the same with that. In compliance with the American Disabilities Act, if any of you need special assistance to participate in this meeting, please let us know as well. Okay. We'll move on to the approval of the minutes of the June 13th, 2018.
Make a motion we approve the June 13th, 2018 minutes.
Gong.
Yes.
Millies.
Yes.
Elliot.
Yes.
BS.
Yes.
Patigliano?
Yes.
Aguilar.
Yes.
Item number four, parcel map public hearings. Actions on all parcel maps in this section of the agenda will be heard in one public hearing unless anyone wishing to discuss any of these items requests that it be pulled for separate public hearing. No staff presentation will be given on any item unless requested. In any case, there will be a separate vote on each of these items. Do any of these items need to be pulled? If not, then we will, um... Open the public hearing. And, um... We have tentative parcel map number PPM 18-015. Is anyone wishing to speak on this? No, then we entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve categorical exemption consistent with the California Environmental Quality Act, SEQA, and the State SEQA Guidelines pursuant to Title 14, California Code Regulation Section 15303, Class 3 pertaining to new construction or conversion of small structures, and conditionally approve tentative parcel map number PPM 18-005 with an exception and final map waiver.
Second.
Gong.
Yes.
Millies.
Yes.
Elliot.
Yes.
BS.
Yes.
Patigliano?
Yes.
Aguilar.
Yes.
Item B, tentative parcel map, PPM 18-017. Open the public hearing for that. Anyone wishing to speak on that item? Close public hearing and entertain a motion to approve.
Make a motion we approve category exemption consistent with the California Environmental Quality Act and the State SEQA Guidelines pursuant to Title 14 California Code Regulation, Section 15303, Class 3 pertaining to new construction or conversion of small structure and conditionally approve tentative parcel map number PPM 18-017 and a final map required.
Second. Gong.
Yes.
Millies.
Yes.
Elliot.
Yes.
BS.
Yes.
Patigliano?
Yes.
Aguilar.
Yes.
At this time, we will continue with the special use permit PSP 17-076.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Uh, this special use permit is going to be continued. We're not going to give a presentation today, but it will be continued to July 25.
To when?
And you-
July 25th.
July 25. And you should open the public hearing in case there's someone here to speak on this matter.
Okay. Thank you. We will open the public hearing. If anybody wishes to speak on this item, uh, please come forward and so that your testimony can put in, be put into record. Also, if there's handouts or anything you want to submit at this time. Oh what?
Well, we did notify all of the persons involved that it was continued, so... We expect July 20th, 25th? Is that what I said?
Then we will close the public hearing? Okay, I'm sorry, continue the public hearing to July 25th. So those of you, um... Those of you who would like to come back that day, you're welcome to come back that day and give testimony. And we will need a vote to continue.
Make a motion that we continue, uh, special use permit PSP 17076 to July 25, 2018.
Second.
Gong.
Uh, yes.
Millies.
Yes.
Elliot.
Yes.
BS.
Yes.
Patigliano?
Yes.
Aguilar.
Yes.
We'll move on to, uh, item B, special use permit number PSP 18-012 for Jorge Vasquez.
All right, good morning, Chairman Aguilar and Commissioners. This, uh, project is special use permit number PSP 18-012. And this is to allow a contractor's storage yard in the AE 40 zone located at the intersection of Avenue 264 and State Route 99 south of Visalia. This is the location and property ownership map for hearing notification. This project was noticed according to the law. Staff has not received any comments with regard to this project. Project is categorically exempt from SEQA pursuant to Section 15301, Class 1 pertaining to existing facilities. The use of this section is applicable and appropriate because the storage yard does not propose any new, uh, structures or earth-moving activities. Entitlement is found in Section 162B of Ordinance Number 352, the zoning ordinance, which allows temporary buildings in uses not otherwise expressly permitted by the zone in which located for periods of not to exceed two years if located outside of an urban development boundary, and for periods of not to exceed six months if located within an urban development boundary. And this facility is located outside an urban development boundary, so this permit will be for two years. And the applicant will need to reapply for another permit when that two-year period is over, if the use is still there. The project is located within the urban area boundary for the city of Visalia and the land use designation is agriculture. The project was found to be consistent with these applicable to Tulare County general plan policies. This is the vicinity map. The project is located at the intersection of Avenue 264 and State Routes 99, as mentioned late earlier. And this is the zoning map. The project is located in the AE 40 zone, and it contains a mobile office, porta-potties, two C-trains, one domestic well, employee parking area, and the equipment storage area. The surrounding properties are zoned AE 40 and C2, which is general commercial, and they contain agriculture and rural residences and a pallet storage facility. This is the aerial view of the project site. Uh, this project is adjacent to State Route 99. Caltrans was contacted with regard to this project, and their comments have been added to the resolution. Caltrans did update their information with regard to improvements, well, with regard to acquiring property. And what they told me was that the project manager for the SR 99 widening and the Tagus Ranch interchange improvements said that right of way, this got funding approval to make offers and anticipate getting the first written offers made, uh, this week or next week.
Will that affect that piece of property?
It may. They, uh, they did say that it may affect the southwestern portion of the property. There is an active code violation on this property. It was issued in January of 2017 for a contractor's storage yard without a special use permit. Uh, project review committee occurred on April 17, 2017, and it was determined at that meeting that the proposed project did not conform to the definition of a contractor's storage yard because the property is greater than five acres and the applicant does not live on the subject site. Therefore, it was decided that the temporary use permit for two years could be recommended for approval and renewed after two years if necessary. This is the site plan. The applicant has contracts with Edison and PG&E to clear power lines of tree growth along roads and major highways in the state. The crews travel up and down the state from Eureka to Southern California. The business maintains a temporary office at this location. The main office is located in Miraloma. The applicant indicated that the equipment would not need to be stored at this location permanently, but rather temporary for two to five years. One mechanic works at this location full-time, and the other mechanic travels three to five days per week in a mobile unit. Up to 35 employees may visit this site on an irregular basis, uh, depending upon the contract and the season. They park their personal vehicles and drive the company vehicle to the location where they will be working that day or for the next week or so. The facility operates seven days a week. The hours of operation are Monday through, oh, oops, okay, Monday through Friday, 7:00 AM to 5:30 PM, and Saturday and Sunday, 7:00 AM to 3:30 PM. And that concludes staff's report, and this is staff's recommendation.
Thank you. Any questions?
Do you have an overhead, uh, picture? Yeah. There is a, a lot of equipment being stored either on that piece or the other piece, if anyone's familiar with that.
I know there's a-
And it doesn't look like tree trimming equipment. It's like broken down.
Oh, on that site? Caltrans had used it as a site as well at, at one point. I believe that the site where the equipment is, is on that site. The, immediately to the west is an old gas station. Most of that land is going to be taken from the improvements with Caltrans. There's a, there's a mess out there right now with pallets and things, but that, most of that land will be taken with the Caltrans facility. Then a little bit to the south, uh, southeast where the trees are across from the, the subject site, there's going to be some, uh, an additional road cut in there. Caltrans is bringing up, uh, a frontage road up from, uh, Cartmill up that comes in and cuts in across from that site, and that's where the southeast part of the actual site might change a little bit too, because there might be a continuation of that or for the on-ramp, northbound on-ramp. So, uh, there's a lot of activity out there. Everything's in flux right now.
Yeah, just, I saw a lot of equipment, but a lot of it looked like it'd been there a long time and broken down. That's why, I just don't want it to be a junkyard.
Right.
And it's only a two-year-
Yes.
-permit, so... Yeah, I've seen that equipment as well. So, Dana, you said there was a, uh...
Code violation?
Code violation. Were they, are they operating on there now?
Yes.
Okay, and they've been on there for a year?
A year.
Okay.
The property owner may be storing his equipment there as well.
Like to see it cleaned up if they're gonna use it even for two years.
I think there's fencing around, uh, they could, uh, make it more private by putting those slats in or something. Okay, uh, we will go ahead and open the public hearing. If there's someone here that would like to comment on this item. Seeing none, then we will close the public hearing. And go back to the commission to see if we want to approve a two-year... Special use permit.
Uh, I'll make the, uh, motion to approve a categorical exemption consistent with SEQA and the State SEQA Guidelines pursuant to Title 14 California Code Regulation Sections 15303, Class 3 pertaining to new construction and conditionally approved special use permit PSP, uh, 18-012. I'll second the motion.
Gong.
Yes.
Millies.
Yes.
Elliot.
Yes.
BS.
Yes.
Patigliano?
Yes.
Aguilar.
Yes.
Thank you. We'll move to item C, which is, uh, special use permit PSP 18-041 in site towers development two.
Uh, yes, good morning.
Good morning.
Again, this project is to allow the installation of an 80-foot-tall cellular communications facility and support equipment on a 2,500-square-foot leased portion of a 2.43-acre parcel in the A1 zone east of the city of Dinuba. This is the hearing notification map. This project was noticed according to the law. Staff did receive one phone call from an adjacent property owner, and he was just curious about the exact location of this tower, and once he was informed of that, he seemed to be satisfied. Project is categorically exempt from SEQA according to Title 14, Section 15303, Class 3 pertaining to new construction or conversion of small structures. Entitlement is found in Section 162B, which allows radio, microwave, and television towers in all zones subject to approval of a special use permit when the tower is at least 75 feet high and less if it's located in an urban development boundary. The project is located within the urban development boundary of the city of Dinuba, and the land use designation is residential medium. The project was found to be consistent with these applicable to Tulare County general plan policies. This is the vicinity map. The project is located south of Avenue 422 between Roads 88 and 92, east of Dinuba. This is the aerial photograph. And the tower will be located in this area right here. Anyhow, there it is, in the southeast section of this parcel, and it will be inside the orchard. This is the zoning map. As mentioned, this is the A1 agriculture zone, and the site contains residence and agriculture, and the surrounding properties contain agriculture and rural residence. This is the site plan. Staff did engage in discussion with the city of Dinuba, and therefore this, uh, cell tower has a monopine design, which was approved by the city of Dinuba. The project includes the cellular tower and ground-mounted equipment for T-Mobile and a future prefabricated equipment shelter for future, uh, access, I guess, and it will be surrounded by a six-foot-tall chain-link fence with wood slats and topped with barbed wire. And that concludes staff's report. And staff is recommending that you approve the categorical exemption from SEQA and conditionally approved special use permit number PSP 18-041. If you have any questions?
And you said it was gonna be like a, that pine tree or something?
It is, yes, a monopine. I know it's very, you can't really tell, it's faint, but yes.
Okay, at this time, we will open the public hearing. If there's anybody wishing to speak on this, this item. Seeing none, we will close the public hearing and return to the Planning Commission.
I'm not sure who suggested the design on this, but I like it, and, uh, I see the city of Dinuba liked it too, and, you know, we had a comment on the one and three of ours that that particular type of pine tree is a little out of place, but actually, if you go back, um, in geological time, the whole place was covered with pine trees, so it's really not that far out of place, and I think it's a nice improvement for folks that gotta drive by and see it and-
They're making a comeback.
Yeah, they're making a comeback.
Lots of towers.
End up with more.
Would you like me to entertain a motion?
Yes.
I make a motion that we approve categorical exemption consistent with the California Environmental Quality Act, SEQA, and the State SEQA Guidelines pursuant to Title 14 California Code Regulation Section 15303, Class 3 pertaining to new construction or conversion of small structures and conditionally approved special use permit number PSP 18-041.
Second that motion.
Gong.
Yes.
Millies.
Yes.
Elliot.
Yes.
BS.
Yes.
Patigliano?
Aguilar.
Yes.
At this time, we will move to item D, special use permit number PSP 18-047, and Visalia Plumbing, Inc.
Coroner? Chairman Aguilar and Commissioners. Tulare County Planner, Tulare County Budget Processing Division. Project for you this morning is to allow a contractor's storage yard special use permit for parcel in the RA 100 rural residential 100,000 square foot minimum zone. Area boundary, north of the parcel. So, project history, uh- Applicants have owned this parcel for approximately two years. I was informed by the applicants that their real estate agent stated that the previous owner operated a trucking company from the site. They bought the site believing that they too operate their business in the same fashion. They have operated Visalia Plumbing from the subject site for approximately two years. They were informed that they were in violation, uh, general code, um, 1800091 on March 14, 2018, for renting a contractor's storage yard without special use. Applicants desired to violate it as quickly as possible and submitted the application for the project review committee on March 23rd, 2018, GRC number 18-024. Meeting was held on April 19th, 2018, and the next day they submitted for the special use permit. Project is exempt from SEQA according to Section 15301, Class 1 pertaining to existing facilities. The use of Section 15301, Class 1 is applicable and appropriate to the project is compatible with this exemption because the project will utilize existing facilities. Entitlement is found in Section 162B of Ordinance Number 352. As amended, the zoning ordinance, which allows contractor's storage yards in the RA zone that do not involve any manufacturing, fabrication, or retail sales of construction materials or equipment, provided that the use of, uses accessory to an onsite dwelling unit occupied by the owners of the facility, and provided that the lot or parcel does not exceed five acres in size. No special use permit for a contractor's storage yard shall be approved unless the open storage of materials and equipment is restricted to an area surrounded and screened by a solid wall or fence or compact evergreen hedge not less than six feet in height, provided that no material shall be stored to a height greater than that of the wall, fence, or hedge. The proposal is in compliance with these requirements. In addition, in 2009, the Board of Supervisors accepted the Planning Commission's interpretation of zoning policy on contractor's storage yards to staff, force staff to implement when reviewing projects. One, planning commission deems that both small businesses and equipment storage for smaller operations was intended to be allowed. Two, the ordinance was written to allow for a small office of less than 400 square feet with a restroom facility. Three, the accessory office would be limited to no more than two non-resident employees, and that no more than ten employees would, would visit the site on a daily basis. Four, hours of operation would be restricted, 30 minutes before sunrise and 30 minutes after sunset. Five, the secondary use is considered to be less than 50% of the total parcel size. Six, no more than 10 vehicles allowed designated contractor's properties. According to, equipment shall be screened as well. The proposal is in compliance with these requirements. The project was noticed according to the law. Staff received three letters expressing concern about the project. The letters have been added as attachments to the memo you received. Summary of the concerns are with regard to increased traffic and noise and lower property value. Also, there were concerns that the applicant was not in compliance with evidence conditions and that were placed on the property that should have no bearing special use permit 18-047 because the county does not enforce these requirements. Project is located within the city of Visalia urban development boundary with the land designation of rural residential. The city of Visalia was sent a consultation notice and Paul Burnall, City of Visalia Planner, at the letter of no comment. The project was found to be consistent with the general plan 2030 as it conforms to the policies applicable within the plan. Right-of-farm, noticing, commercial storage facilities, small business, home-based businesses, contamination prevention, and peak noise. Subject site is located approximately one-third of a mile east of Ben Maddox Way and one mile north of St. John's Parkway, north of Visalia. The subject parcel is zoned RA 100 rural residential 100,000 square foot minimum, falls with, in the Visalia UDB, the land use designation of rural residential. The surrounding properties are all zoned RA 100 exclusive agriculture, 20 acre minimum and exclusive agriculture 40 acre minimum, and the surrounding properties are rural residences and agriculture. Sensory view of the project site.
Question, David, please. Uh, do we have any other, uh, commercial, uh, operations in that? Any-
Any, any other commercial operations in the vicinity?
Yes, or in the neighborhood there?
In the neighborhood. I, I did not go outside of the three-hundred-foot radius of the subject. Subject site contains a traditional residence, a detached shop, square foot office with restroom, covered parking for two vans, concrete parking for three cars, gravel parking for four cars, a septic tank, a domestic well, and two solar arrays. And the property is surrounded by a six-foot-tall stucco fence.
The whole property or just that area?
The, everything except the frontage, the frontage fence. This is a five-foot-tall iron. This project for a contractor's storage yard is for the storage of equipment utilized in the applicant's plumbing business, Visalia Plumbing. The equipment includes plumbing materials, small equipment, two trucks, two vans, one trailer, and a four cubic yard waste bin for solid waste. Per the Board of Supervisors Resolution number two zero zero nine dash zero seven eight zero, of approval will restrict parking to a maximum of ten square foot to the subject site. Days of operation are Monday through Friday with the general hours of operation of seven thirty AM to four thirty PM. Per the Board of Supervisors Resolution, one-half hour before sunrise, hour after sunset. Applicants have stated that they have four employees. There is a existing tall fence around three sides of the property, the frontage fence being five-foot-tall iron. Additionally, the storage of equipment shall be no higher than the fence. A three-foot-by-four-foot sign in front of the existing shop is proposed. Per Board of Supervisors Resolution, a condition of approval shall restrict the area being utilized for the contractor's storage yard to no more than fifty percent of the entire property.
But you said there's a sign? A sign for what?
They propose to do a sign just in front of their shop, not, not out on the street, but within their property, just in front of their detached shop.
Advertising their business? Is that what the sign is?
I don't see it as advertising since nobody from the street should be able to see it, depending on, on the location of where they want the sign. I think it's more of a pride thing than advertising. Staff is recommending that your commission in one motion approve a categorical exemption consistent with the California Environmental Quality Act guidelines pursuant to Title fourteen, California Code Regulation, Section fifteen three oh one, Class one pertaining to existing facilities, and conditionally approve special use permit number PSP eighteen dash zero four seven.
Say there was all, an existing business there before they moved in?
The applicants were told by the real estate agent that the previous owner ran a trucking business from the subject site.
There's no record of a...
I'm, I couldn't tell you one way or another, I couldn't tell you what, I, the applicant, who, who are here that you can ask them.
But David, how long have they been running the plumbing business there?
Approximately two years.
Two years.
Code violation, is that why we're here?
Yes, to clear up a code violation.
Any other questions of David?
I would like to say that the applicant really honestly did not know that they would need the special use permit, they just thought they would be able to since the last owner did. Once they knew that there was a code violation, they came in immediately to solve the problem.
Hey, this time we will open the public hearing. How many are here to comment on this item? If the applicant wants to speak first, we'll give the applicant a chance, and then please go to the far microphone and state your name and address, and continue.
Mike Carpenter, one-three-four-nine-six El Nogal. We did originally move into the, we bought the place, the actual realtor was the daughter of the owner, and she specified that he had, he runs a big rig trucking, shipping, and receiving business there for the last twelve years. This is the reason they sold the house to us. She said that I'm sure the neighbors would, wouldn't mind smaller trucks than bigger trucks like they did for the last twelve years. Once again, I did talk to a couple of neighbors in, in my general area before I bought the house, and they said, as well, no big deal. So I proceeded to purchase the, the building. I did not, did not purchase it trying to ruffle any feathers, I thought it would be an easy transition. I do really well trying to keep it all unseen. If you guys drove by it, there would be no way that you would even think that I had a storage yard there. Looks just like any other house on the block, and that was out of respect for my neighbors. Once again, I wasn't brought to attention, any of the neighbors saying that they had an issue prior to the county coming out. If they did, I would've tried my best to appease anything that they had, had, you know, any issues. Once again, I, I still work forty to sixty hours, so my van comes in and out of there because it's my home, so other than that, the only real issue I would see is my other trucks coming in and out of there, which would be two, approximately two other, three other trucks at some times. Once again, you know, I would've appeased any, any accommodation, I would've accommodated anybody that would've came to me with any issues, and I hope that, you know, I can continue, you know, live in my dream, because that's my dream, me and my wife's dream, to, to do what we're doing, so I hope we can clarify anything that's an issue and just move on. Thank you for your time.
Do you meet clients there at all?
Not at all.
I have a question on this sign, still confused about why, why you need a sign out there.
We don't need a sign if it's, if it's an issue, I think it was basically more for, sometimes, you know, people don't know where the actual door is to the office, so it's mostly like an office sign so they know where the door's at, is really what it's just, you know, a small Visalia Plumbing sticker. Once again, if, you know, if, if it's an issue, I would definitely appease not to put it up, not a big deal.
Like for deliveries, is that what you're talking about?
Stuff like that, I order, you know, parts that we have to order for people and that are being shipped there and stuff like that.
Mike, did you read the CCNRs when you bought the home?
No, I didn't.
Were, were they part of the, the closing?
Um, I, I'm unaware.
I didn't read them either, I'm just curious whether it addresses this kind of a, sometimes it does, and I don't know if this, these do or not.
Uh, no, I haven't.
Was that a disclose, did they, did the realtor disclose what you're doing now as, as a, as an acceptable, as acceptable to have a business there?
I, I basically, since she was the, the owner's daughter, I kinda took their word for it.
Verbally?
Yes, verbally, and then I also, you know, like I said, talked to my immediate neighbors next to me, the ones I did know, kinda asked them, you know, if that would be an issue, trucks driving in and out, they said no, that they, they don't mind, and at that time we proceeded to.
Would've been a little helpful to have some photographs, ground level, to see what's around as far as residents. Is it possible to do any foliage that would cover up part of that operation that would not be visible or viewable from the street?
I've already closed everything in, so there's no trucks visible, no nothing visible from any of...
But you can't tell it's a...
Not at all, from any corner, east, north, south, and west.
Because from that, that aerial doesn't look like there's any foliage as far as that lower left, lower right-hand corner, what's that out there?
Yeah, I, I put in some foliage on the east, what was that, that west side, which is the smallest fence on the actual property, and I planted some more in the back, but once again, I don't, there's nothing to, to hide because everything's already hidden inside of the shop, so there's nothing visible that would be an eyesore at all.
Is the shop architecture different from the residential architecture around it?
Exactly the same, it just looks like one...
So the other neighbors kinda look the same, huh?
Pretty much, yeah. I mean, there's nothing different to that shop, it looks exactly like my house, stucco roof.
Yeah, can't tell from the aerial.
Mr. Carpenter, we had some, I think I read some testimony here that some of the neighbors felt that the, the road was less than standard, substandard out there. What size are your trucks?
They're just one tons.
One-ton truck?
Yeah.
Okay. And then how many trips a day do you figure?
Well, me, I take more trips than anybody because, you know, my home's there as well, I go back for lunch, stuff like that, but my guys get dispatched in the morning and they come back in the afternoon, and that's it, yeah.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair, if I may ask, Mr. Carpenter, a clarification question. One of the comments made was an increase in traffic, and they had mentioned possible parking of vehicles on the street. Would that occur for your employees or any of your trucks?
Not at all, we have...
They're all interior?
Yeah, they're all parked in between the, in between that driveway, in between the two, there's a parking in the very back, so any, any of the employees park in the back. Any of the cars that are out front in my driveway are all personal cars from my daughter, my grand, my father-in-law, and me and my wife's car.
Okay, so the majority of your trips, your saying, if I interpret it correctly, is that they're essentially home occupants or residential based, they're not business based. Can you give us an approximation of how many vehicles actually per day, including employees, delivery trucks, inter-exit on, on a regular basis that are business-related?
Four arrive and four leave, with the exception of every so often I get a delivery for a part, which is like a UPS truck, and that's occasionally when I have to order parts. Other than that, I have parts houses outside the neighborhood that we pick up parts when the guys are out on their calls, but they don't come back.
I'm trying to provide clarification, the amount, Commissioner Diaz asked about, you know, the trucks also, but you mentioned that there had been heavy-duty rigs versus your one-ton trucks?
Yes, he had, prior to me being there, he had a shipping-receiving business where his big rigs would come in, unload pallets, the house actually came with a forklift. He would unload the pallets, load them into the shop now, and then load them on his, and then deliver them somewhere else.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you. Anybody else wishing to speak on, state your name and address?
So, my name is Millie Owens, I am at one-three-four-three-three Perry Drive, it would be the one, okay. So my home is, I'm already mounted, my home is this one right behind here, okay? If I go back one slide, can you get the whole neighborhood?
No.
Yes, go back one slide, you had the whole, I think, one, yes. So as you see here, this is actually a neighborhood of thirty-one homes, and this is Ben Maddox over here, this is the one entrance into the neighborhood, this El Nogal right here, you got... Everybody's gotta come in on El Nogal. So really, at his, you go down El Nogal and into here, so there's a Little Road Forest and a Little Road Perry, so I'm behind on this one really, even though the law requires you only to notify those. The ones who are really gonna see it are these homes along El Nogal here, because this is a neighborhood with one entrance and exit. Okay, so ours was one of the first homes built in this neighborhood, so I've had the joy of watching families grow up here, the sadness of some homeowners passing away, the excitement of new young families. This is a neighborhood, not a random collection of rural lots. You can leave that up, it's helpful to describe.
Don't, don't worry about it.
Thanks, okay. In the early morning, there are retired and working-age adults who walk the neighborhood as individuals and pairs, later in the morning, there are stroller groups, young kids who walk through our neighborhood. During the school year, the neighborhood kids walk or ride their bus, rock or ride their bike to the Visalia Unified School Bus Stop. The school bus stop is right there at the end of El Nogal and Ben Maddox, the only entrance and exit, okay? The bus picks up and drops off kids at that entrance every day during the school year, like school buses do. Increased traffic that will occur as a result of the business in the middle of this neighborhood will disrupt our neighborhood and decrease the safety of all the groups, walkers, runners, including the kids going to and from the bus stop. Visalia Plumbing appears to be a very solid business, they were, they, they seem to be highly moral, they seem to be a really solid, nice people, this is hard. However, already it is very noticeable, as they, they try, but they come in at seven-thirty, when you walk, you know when they come to work, you know when they leave. I've seen what I assume are salespeople, they don't have control over them, park on El Nogal, walk up the driveway pulling their little case, I assume samples, back to the large shop building. Because Visalia Plumbing is a good business, they will grow, they are a solid business. Visalia Plumbing on El Nogal already shows up on my Google map, when I pull up Google to go home, Visalia Plumbing is there. The amount of traffic for employees, salespeople, customers will increase, that's what a good business does, and that would be detrimental to our neighborhood, okay? Although the large shop has been there for many years, there has never been a visible nor a permitted business in there in the past, it sounds like it was misled. There was a man who lived there, I think he might've had some type of business like that, maybe once a year there was a big truck that came in, but it was, wasn't even monthly. Visalia Plumbing will cause a very significant negative impact in our neighborhood.
Any questions?
Uh-huh, questions? You'll get here, uh-huh.
How, how, how long was that business before the plumbing there? You didn't notice it? You didn't notice it?
No, because you didn't...
I thought I just heard somebody say there was a trucking business there.
Well, that's what they said, but if...
Well, there wasn't a trucking...
I mean, if there was a truck, the man had, there was never anything with a permit, because we were one of the first homes, and we would've had to been notified if there was a permit, and we would have objected, so there was never a permitted business there. They're very likely, it's a, it's a big barn shop building, so they could've had a truck come in once a year, and I wouldn't have paid any attention to that.
Well, you'd have seen a big truck, I mean...
Well, I think, I think there'd been a...
So there were no trucks during the year, other than once a year?
Once or twice a year, I, I didn't...
Once or twice a year.
I didn't, because I'm behind them, I, I never saw, I, I mean, I think there was a big tr, you know, like you get IKEA, well, you get something delivered and it comes on a big truck, so I think occasionally you got a big truck.
Well, I heard a trucking business, so that's what I'm kinda keying on here. Is there a trucking business, or was there a trucking, or not? Yes or no?
To the best of my knowledge, no.
Okay.
I did not see the trucks come in and out.
Can any of your neighbors attest to that as well?
We'll let them...
Oh, we'll let them come up, but I just, I'm curious.
I, I don't think, I, I do not know of a trucking business.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry, you have to talk to the...
I do not know of any trucking business there.
Thank you.
Okay.
Thank you. Now I can come up.
Good morning, my name is Janet Arndt. My husband Rick and I are homeowners on El Nogal Avenue. Our address is one-three-two-five-one El Nogal. We are one of the first two properties that you see when driving onto El Nogal Road, El Nogal off of Road one thirty-two. We are one of the original homeowners in this neighborhood. We have owned our property for over twenty-two years, since nineteen ninety-six. We built our home and finished raising our four kids before they went off to college. We decided to buy our property years ago because of the atmosphere out there, with it being a quiet neighborhood and homeowners that showed a pride of ownership. We understood that when we were buying in the subdivision, it was zoned rural residential, which is just what we wanted, a little bit of land and not too far away from the city. Rick and I are opposed, excuse me, to allowing a special use permit for Visalia Plumbing due to the simple reason that this neighborhood is zoned rural residential, not rural commercial. We feel it's not fair to the integrity of our quiet neighborhood to allow a business to operate like Visalia Plumbing has done. Visalia Plumbing is not just a Monday through Friday, eight AM to five PM business, it is a twenty-four-hour-day, seven-days-a-week business. Since my husband and I are retired, and with being one of the first properties on El Nogal, we see a lot of vehicles coming and going all day long. The extra traffic generated with their employees coming and going, their business vans coming and going, as well as their delivery trucks coming and going is a lot. The extra traffic generated with their employees coming and going, their business vans coming and going, as well as their delivery trucks coming and going is a lot. It is not fair that we have to put up with all the extra traffic. If you allow this business to continue to operate, then what is the next business that you'll allow in here? And the next, and the next. There are thirty-two lots in our subdivision and thirty-one homes. Out of these thirty-one homes, there are thirteen other homeowners besides owners of Visalia Plumbing that own their own businesses. I have this map. The red X's are all the other property owners that also own their own businesses that operate someplace outside of this neighborhood. If you allow Visalia Plumbing to continue to operate their business on El Nogal, then which is the next business and the next and the next that you're also allowed to operate in our neighborhood? Where do you draw the line? Yes to the first request, but no to the next one? We have had an application in with the county for a detached garage on our property since February twentieth of this year. We've been waiting eighteen weeks to get this process completed. And during this process, we had to submit a letter stating we did not plan on operating a business out of this detached garage. If you, if we have already been told we are not allowed to operate a business out of our new garage, then, and that was one of the conditions of getting a permit, then why should Visalia Plumbing be allowed to operate their business? Simply stated, we feel it's not fair to the rest of the homeowners in our subdivision to allow a business to operate in our residential neighborhood. Thank you.
I'll ask you the same question. Was there a trucking company there before the plumbing company?
And my answer is, I was working at the time, so I did not see as much. If my husband would come up and speak, he could say more. I know it was not, if he did a business, it was not legally, he did not have a permit to do it.
But did you notice him at all or not?
I was working. I was, I went out at six-thirty in the morning and didn't come in until four in the afternoon, so I don't know.
When you said that they operate twenty-four hours a day, is it-
It's a plumbing business, so-
Is it that you're seeing his van come in and out?
I don't know. They never have introduced themselves, so we don't know who they are. We just see the Visalia Plumbing vans coming and going. I saw one going Friday night at seven forty-five. So I don't know who was driving it.
That's the van he uses?
I don't know. I don't know.
Thank you.
Question?
Thank you.
Thank you.
I might be able to address some of the questions you've put together. Good morning, I'm Larry Owens. I live at 13433 Perry Drive. That's adjacent to the northwest corner of the subject property. I'm a registered civil engineer in the state of California. I am speaking in opposition of a categorical exemption for special use permit number eighteen dash zero four seven. This is nothing personal against the applicant, but I must do so to protect the quality of life of our neighborhood. The justification given for the categorical exemption is existing facility under Title fourteen, Section one-five-three-zero-one. This is an incorrect application of that regulation. It would not be allowed under SEQA. A business cannot begin operating without a permit in violation of zoning and then, when discovered, claim their operation as an existing use. According to the Tulare County Zoning Ordinance, Chapter three, Section fifteen A seven C, quote, "Rural home occupations may be permitted only if a use permit is first secured." So the permit must come first, not after establishing the non-compatible use. Comparison must be made to conditions that exist before a project is implemented, not after. Otherwise, there would never be an impact for any project, because you'd be comparing it to itself. Using a valid comparison to pre-existing conditions, Visalia Plumbing has caused an impact in increased traffic at the intersection of El Nogal and Ben Maddox, the only ingress and egress for the neighborhood, and also has caused increases in traffic and noise within the neighborhood. For this reason, the categorical exemption should be rejected. The special use permit is for contractor's storage yard. This designation is inaccurate. This is a full-fledged plumbing shop. Both of those uses, the contractor's storage yard and the plumbing shop, are both listed in Section twelve point five for C-three service commercial zoning, the same zoning that's used for automobile repair. Why apply for a storage yard then? Why not the plumbing shop? Because it sounds less intrusive than a plumbing shop to say it's a storage yard. This is not just off-site storage for their business that they conduct elsewhere. This is their business address, as can be soon seen by Googling their business name. Their application probably also failed to state that they're available twenty-four hours and seven days a week. Just check the Yellow Pages that came out this week. This would effectively turn our RA one hundred zoning into C-three zoning. Clearly, this is a non-compatible use. Last, Visalia Plumbing is an old business. They've been in operation over thirty years and that should be acknowledged and celebrated. But this is not a new startup working out of someone's garage. They have worked out of other facilities for many years. They said they've only been here two years. They've been in business for over thirty years. Their location prior to moving the business into our neighborhood was in the Visalia Industrial Park at one zero four eight Marson Street off Goshen Avenue. Their shop was located between San Joaquin Pest Control and White Glove Carpet and Upholstery Cleaning. Will we expect to have those two businesses moving into our neighborhood soon as well? Let me say that again. They moved from an industrial park into our residential neighborhood. In summary, the categorical exemption of existing use is inappropriately used and the special use permit designation of contractor's storage yard is inaccurate. This is obviously a non-compatible use. Please reject this application. Thank you. I'd also like to address the question about supposedly the pre-existing business. We've lived there since nineteen ninety-five. Before the, the business that was in there, let me address one other, is that in nineteen ninety-six, an electrician wanted to start his electrical business on Perry Drive. That was still when the original subdivider of the parcel, Mr. Alan Duff, was there. And in that case, the electrician submitted to Mr. Duff that he was going to create his business there. So Mr. Duff allowed us to talk with him, and myself and Randy Merrill met with him and saw that he was planning to have trucks in and out, very similar to what this business is doing. And we said, no, we, this is a residential area. So this is not that we're picking on this particular business. We have said no before. In that case, thankfully, they asked before they built. We said no. They weren't pleased, but they accepted that that was going to be the case, because they knew that they would not be able to operate in that business in our neighborhood. Okay, secondly, with the previous owner at the existing subject parcel, I submitted in nineteen ninety-eight, that's when Mr. Bert Harmon first started to build on that lot. I polled the neighborhood, because I saw the plans for what he was planning to do, because he had submitted it to Mr. Duff. I saw the plans. I, we went around the neighborhood and the neighbors agreed we didn't want this kind of thing coming in. May I read that into the record for you? And I can give you a copy of this. This is what I sent to Mr. Harmon. Dear Mr. Harmon, it has come to our attention that you have submitted plans to the Tulare County Building Department for the construction of a three thousand-square-foot barn shop on your property at El Nogal Avenue. This is cause for concern for two counts. We want to address these concerns now, nineteen ninety-eight, prior to the beginning of any construction, so there will not be any misunderstanding. First, plans for any buildings must be submitted and approved by the Architectural Control Committee of Greenbrier Estates, as declared in the Declaration of Restrictions of Greenbrier Estates. Building style, materials, location, and driveways must conform to the specifications stated in Article one of the Restrictions. Restrictions for use are also listed in that document. You have not submitted any plans to the Architectural Control Committee. Second, the size and design of the shop barn under consideration and the fact that no house has been built first suggests that you may intend to use the shop barn for commercial purposes. Such a use would be in violation of the ordinances of Tulare County. This is strictly a residential area. County zoning ordinances will be enforced. We look forward to you joining our neighborhood and trust that you understand our desire to maintain the residential nature and architectural quality of the area. And it is signed by the neighbors in the neighborhood. At the same time, I submitted a copy of that letter to Ms. Mary Beatty, Assistant Director of the Tulare County Resource Management Agency. To Ms. Beatty, I said, "I am writing to you concerning the submission of plans for the construction of a barn shop in a residential neighborhood by Mr. Bert Harmon. The construction site address is one three four nine six El Nogal Avenue." Gave the building permit, attached is a copy of a letter sent to Mr. Harmon, expressing the concerns of the residents of the neighborhood in which he intends to build this structure. Considering that Mr. Harmon operates a wholesale fastener business, we had heard what he had done previously, we find it suspicious that he intends to build a three thousand-square-foot warehouse for personal use. He has not constructed or submitted plans for residents on this property. He did eventually. On behalf of the other property owners, I would appreciate any further action you might be able to take at this time to prevent a possible zoning violation from occurring. I realize your options may be limited at this time, but we would be grateful for any help you can provide. At the very least, I felt it would be prudent to document the fact that Mr. Harmon was advised of the zoning ordinances prior to any construction taking place. Then I gave my contact information. Ms. Beatty did respond to me by phone at that time and said, basically, we can't do anything until he violates the zoning ordinance. So he went ahead. He did operate a business. As far as I know, the trucks came in at night, but he was operating a business out there in violation of the zoning. So I can submit this to you if you'd like. These are copies of that letter. So he was aware that it was a zoning violation. He chose not to apply for a special use permit for the same reason, because he knew it was a violation of the zoning. The fact that he then told the new owner that he could operate a business is not pertinent to this fact, because he basically was operating in violation knowingly. Questions?
Want to ask him your question again?
Yeah, his Realtor is the one that just told, told the new owners, correct?
I'm not in that conversation. I can't answer that.
So what have you been noticing for the last ten or twelve years as far as that business? Was there a trucking business there?
What are you trying to ask me here?
I'm just asking, was there a business? To your knowledge, was, in your observation-
To my knowledge, he was operating a fastener business, yes.
Was it a fastener business?
Yes, that's what he did.
Not a trucking business.
What's that?
Not a trucking business.
Not a trucking business. A fastener, from what we understood, he would bring the fasteners in at night and then he distributed, it was only himself. He had no employees. He was not trucks in and out. This was, he would, I don't know his business. He's passed away as well, so we can't bring him in to talk. But a truck would come in at night. We didn't notice trucks from him. They would unload, and from what I understood, then he distributed them by himself to wholesale places. It was not a trucking business where trucks were in and out.
Well, that's what I was trying to determine.
Okay.
So, so they were in violation of CCNRs, according to what I'm reading here.
And in violation of zoning.
And the zoning.
It's an RA one hundred zone, not a C-three zone.
Do you have a question? Thank you.
Thank you.
Good morning. My name's John Johnson. I live at one three three nine zero Perry Drive in this neighborhood that's pictured here. I concur with what my neighbors have informed you of this morning. I won't berate that further. As far as a trucking business at this property, there was no trucking business. I've lived there twenty-one years. I'm in that neighborhood every single day. I've been retired for a long time. There was no trucking business. I wasn't even aware there was any kind of business there. My neighbor Larry says that there was, with faster business, I don't know anything about that, but there was definitely no trucking business, ever. So I'll have to say.
Well, that's what I was trying to determine, and the Realtor that was involved in selling the home to-
I think he said that the former owner's daughter or something told him that.
He's a Realtor.
Oh, she may have been a Realtor, but she had some kind of involvement with the owner.
That's what I said, was it ever disclosed at the time of the sale?
I would have no way of knowing that.
Yeah, you wouldn't know that necessarily and-
But I can tell you there was no trucking business there.
Okay, well, that's what I was trying to determine. That's what I heard.
Okay. Well, you was, you was misinformed.
To the chair?
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
I believe that the, the last two owners live up here on Perry Court, actually, and I don't quite see how they would see any traffic coming through El Nogal, living at these addresses up here. So they may just been unaware, because they wouldn't have seen the traffic.
Is there anyone else wishing to speak?
I live in J.C.
Okay.
I'm sorry, there must be another gentleman up here.
Senator Harris, this is Owens.
I'm sorry.
Is there, is there anyone else wishing to speak?
My name is Rick Arndt. I live at one three two three, one three two five one El Nogal, which is on the very corner of the, of El Nogal and one thirty-two. I see all the cars coming in and out. I work outside all the time. I'm always in my yard. People make fun of the fact that I'm always in my yard. And the amount of cars that have increased since Visalia Plumbing has moved in, they are, they go out on Saturdays and Sundays. I've seen them go out on Saturdays and Sundays. The people that owned that property before them had a fastener business. They sold fasteners like for construction, and he distributed them out of his own house. There might have been a truck come in four or five times in the whole twelve-year period delivering stuff, but I assume somebody complained because that stopped. He didn't do it anymore. I agree with the fact that, you know, when is, if we approve this business, then what's the next business to come in? What's the next person that's going to say, oh, I want to put a plumbing, I want to put a auto shop and start working out of my garage repairing autos? It's just, you know, we're a neighborhood. There's a lot of kids that go up. The bus stop is right on the corner of my property. And there's a lot of kids going up and down that street all the time. In fact, I think the bus people should move that bus stop, because it's home one thirty-two and it's a busy street, one thirty-two. But it, it's not something that, that should be allowed because of the fact the kids are going up and down there all the time. Any questions?
Thank you. Anyone else? Okay, we will close the public hearing. Actually, I'd like to-
Sure, if I may, through the chair, a couple of items regarding the C-three and the current zoning on the site. This contractor's storage yard is allowed via special use permit in this zone, wherein C-three, those uses are allowed by right. You just, that's, that's the whole purpose of having to have to have a special use permit. But then you go through the process of, of having to go through the special use discretionary decision of the planning commission. CCNRs are not enforced through the county, you know, that should be obviously something disclosed. We're not party to the, the real estate transaction. We're not party to the real estate transaction. Those things should be disclosed if there is a violation of that, and that needs to be under consideration for that. As far as talking about how the one house, and I will follow up on your accessory garage to make sure that that thing's moving forward. We don't allow structures to be built in advance, in a residential zone until a house is built. So how this structure, which is permitted now, the history of that, when it was initially built, really isn't relevant to the, it's an existing building right now. So it is an existing facility. They're not, they didn't add anything to it, at least that I'm aware of, and through permits. And the SEQA analysis was based on the impacts, and I'll let the chief SEQA environmental planner talk to that. So I just wanted to set those things straight, that it is entitled in that zone via use permit. And yes, it is proper for the applicant to come forward first. Unfortunately, usually it's through a violation, and then we put them through the process. So in real world sense, that's, you know, 90% of the time, it's a violation, and the applicants are either misinformed at the beginning, or they don't, whatever it is, it's usually brought in, and that's how these usually move forward. So it's just a real world scenario for use permits. I'll let Hector talk about SEQA aspects.
Mike, Hector Guerra, as point of clarification, as Director Washington pointed out, the county has determined that the use is an existing use. The buildings are an existing building. There's prima facie evidence. That's the bottom line. It is there. It is what we call the SEQA baseline, whether or not it's interpreted as being compatible or consistent with zoning by, you know, Mr. Owens and whomever, Mr. Johnson or anyone. It is our call when it comes to, you know, whether or not it's allowed. Obviously, because this is something that needs to be remedied, we did do a SEQA evaluation. And we go on the information that is provided by the applicant, the number of vehicles, the routes it's going to take to come and go, those kind of things. Now, all of our SEQA is based on fact, and fact only. I can appreciate any neighbors concerned that future businesses may locate there. Of course, I'd be concerned too, but that's speculation, that another business, then another business, then another business. That is absolute speculation. I can't go by that. Yeah, I can't go by, you know, someone, when Mr. Carpenter's business does an urgent response to somebody having plumbing, I don't see that as a 24-hour operation. That's an emergency response to something. I mean, if I needed a plumber at 11 o'clock at night, then that is not the same, in my opinion, as it operating as a business. It's being responsive. It could very well be a well-drilling place that we've given permits to where, you know, the pumps break and they got to go out there. My bottom line is, as for the SEQA thing, is that it is allowed. It's a special use permit. It's, he's going through the process. The traffic is not significant, and that's the operative word in SEQA is substantial and significant. No evidence has been presented to say that it is. You know, he's increased it by 80 cars a day, 10 cars a day. I've heard a lot of "I think." You know, "I think that's there, I think that's there." And again, I can understand from the, from the resident's perspective where they would be coming from, but unless it says, or unless it's evidenced that the business deliveries are going directly to his location, I can't, I can't use that as to say, "Yeah, it increased traffic." Well, that was real yet.
Okay.
I didn't have much more to add to it. So that's our SEQA interpretation as the lead agency. We make that call, and our call is that it is qualified as a categorical exemption.
You mentioned, Mike, that the county does not enforce CCNRs. I imagine that that's something that they will be able to enforce privately.
Absolutely, absolutely. And if there's an injunction from a court, then we do abide by that. I just want to talk, do a little bit, well, first of all, I have to dig down a little bit, and I'm going to recommend that we continue this matter for further discussion. Looking at the contractor storage yard definition in the zoning ordinance, there may be limitations as to onsite. It's really supposed to be a customer, employees coming and going in storage, not onsite manufacturing or product. So I think what we need to do is talk more of a business plan to find out exactly what's being proposed to be utilized onsite and to really come back with some more findings on that. And the only other question I have is that, and I know you've closed the public comment, and I'd like to talk to the neighbors as well to meet and discuss what's, what the overall situation would be, but that this has been going on for a couple of years, and this isn't being proposed to expand what's been going on for a couple of years or not? So I think what we need to do is really sit down, continue it, and look through, look through and have more of a refined activities. Again, the difference between a C3 or a commercial zoning and allowing it via use permit is the conditions that are put on it, and so we need to dig down deeper into that and look at that before we bring it back.
For a date certain or...
I think we could, we could probably make it for a date certain. Let's look at maybe the first meeting in August.
August 8.
August 8. We'll make a date certain. So we'll, so we'll come back on, I want to reach out to the neighbors as well as the property owner, but we'll come back on August 8 for the decision.
I think one of the items that they brought up is that because there's only one egress and ingress.
Ingress, egress.
That if you can expand it more than the 300 yards, is that something you can contact the whole neighborhood, or since there's only one entrance?
We can certainly do that, and I would suspect that the neighbors have probably already informed everybody, but we will certainly mail out for all of the property owners in that subdivision.
I thank Hector for the clarification on what's correct via SEQA. We now know that this is allowed based on the current findings, but, Mike, that's a great idea. I think a neighbor meeting is appropriate. This has been going on for two years. There's been no complaint until now because of the violation in the permit requirement. I understand that. And now we understand the businesses that weren't there or were there. I think the neighbors ought to get together and see if they can work this out with your guidance and then bring it back at a date to be determined.
Right. You know, we won't make the date certain. I, let's withdraw that just to make sure, and we'll renotice it again.
Okay.
And include all of the property owners.
You know, Mike, and I know the county doesn't get involved with CCNRs, but these people went to great lengths 20-some years ago to set up CCNRs to protect their residential property, and even though we don't get involved with it, I think it's something that we need to probably keep in mind and kind of respect.
Again, the county doesn't get involved with that. There's some, I've seen some CCNRs that aren't even legal on certain aspects of who can live where and what. However, it can be, the property owner, and I'm not specifically talking about this case, but a property owner, when they purchase a property, they need to understand what the conditions are, and the CCNR is the legal way to proceed or restrict or to do whatever, and that's actually the proper way to do that. We can't be involved in that private agreement for the homeowners association.
But that was their only recourse at the time, and they took that recourse, and it sounds like from Mr. Owens' testimony, they aggressively pursue it and keep an eye on it, and they've been, and so it's not something that's been lax, and all of a sudden, "Oh, by the way, there are some CCRs here somewhere."
Well, I would, I would hope that we can find some sort of agreement without having to take that. If, in the next couple of weeks, we'll try to meet and talk and move it forward, but if that's the ultimate case, that would be the ultimate case, and that, again, is out of our jurisdiction.
I think it was a double whammy for the applicant. He didn't read the CCNRs. He said so at the beginning, but he also wasn't disclosed correctly by the realtor. I mean, you may have recourse to the realtor on this. I don't know. I'm in real estate, so I think you can certainly pursue that. CCNRs, as Ed said, they were there in place, and I've read through them while everybody's talking, and there's a lot of things that weren't allowed that this particular applicant is doing. So we have the county versus the CCNRs.
Well, there's a couple of things that resonate with me about this, too. All of us want to see violations corrected, there's no doubt, but at the same time, you know, we get a lot of these, and no one says a thing. You know, there's no letters, there's no, and I think we need to gauge the interest on the part of the neighbors, and that's why your suggestion, Mike, I think is a good one. It's where we need to go with this, and if they can come up to some kind of agreement, we could support that.
And even if not, I mean, we put our best effort out there, and if it don't, doesn't come to agreement, fine, but at least we put an effort out there.
And we have all the facts at that point, too.
I feel like I have a lot of questions on this. I just don't...
Does someone want to propose to...
I'd like to make a motion to continue this item to, I guess, a date uncertain, and then staff will renotice and get back to us with a date on the agenda.
I second that.
Okay, roll call.
Yes.
Bailey?
Yes.
Elliot?
Yes.
Yes. Patiglano?
Yes.
Aguilar?
Yes. So it will be renoticed, and they're going to try to set up some meetings with you. Hopefully, everything can be resolved, and if not, then we'll be here again on a later date. Thank you for your participation.
During this time, if you guys can get together with the applicant and the county, sit down and see if, if there's something that can be worked out. We don't want to sit here and micromanage this thing for you. That's not our job.
We don't want a violation.
Whether it's traffic, whether it's aesthetics, like... Sometimes I think, you know, sometimes I think this is just the neighbors' guy, "Ah, this is our opportunity to go after." We didn't like the previous guy.
Okay, we'll go on to item E, which is setback variance number PSV 18-001, Fine Development,
Your Menagular Commissioners, the project before you now is a categorical exemption. Section 15303, Class 3 pertaining to new construction or conversion of small structures and setback variance number 001, requested by property owner Lamont Lacani, agent, Sign Development Incorporated. To allow the installation, two freestanding signs within the 60-foot building line setback area of Mineral King Avenue, approximately a third of a mile to Visalia, located in the C2 SC general commercial scenic corridor zone. Comment is found in section 7-19-1215. The building line setback ordinance as amended states that a variance may be granted if said grant in harmony with the general purpose and intent, and so that the spirit of the ordinance shall be observed, public safety and welfare served, and substantial justice. In order for this variance to be approved, a finding needs to be made supporting practical difficulties, unnecessary hardships, or results inconsistent with the general purpose of this article, could result through the strict and literal interpretation and enforcement of this article with respect to the proposed... Parcel lies on the north side of Mineral King Avenue. The existing right-of-way of Mineral King Avenue is variable due to state route 198 frontage road right-of-way transitions. As of now, there is no future right-of-way for the subject area of Mineral King Avenue. Therefore, the variance would not negatively impact any future widening of Mineral King Avenue. Caltrans was sent a notice, a consultation notice, and they replied back with no comment. The SC zone for the subject area for Mineral King Avenue requires a minimum of 60 feet from the center line of the right-of-way. If the two proposed signs were to be built 60 feet from the center line of the right-of-way, it would place the signs in locations that would conflict with parking and the gas pumps, hence creating practical difficulties and unnecessary hardships. Strict and literal interpretation of the ordinance is depriving the property owners of the same property rights and privileges that their neighbors enjoy. Approximately one mile east, a much taller double pole sign advertising a 76 gas station and a McDonald's sits approximately 40 feet from the center line of the right-of-way. Project was noticed according to the law. Staff did not receive any comments regarding this project.
David, again, how far is the proposed setback versus the 60?
Within the 60 is, it's a little small, it's, two more slides and I'll, and I'll have the exact numbers.
Okay. Okay.
Yes. Project is located on a .92 acre parcel in the C2 SC general commercial scenic corridor zone, within the Visalia urban development boundary with a land use reservation service commercial, light industrial, approximately a third of a mile east of Visalia city limits, and approximately 800 feet west of Road 156. City of Visalia was sent a consultation notice and replied with no comment. All surrounding properties are zoned exclusive agriculture 20 for C2 and C3 combined zones. As you can see, the two signs are proposed is a monument sign and a double pole advertising the prices for a Sinclair gas station. These, from the, for both of them, from the center line is within 20 feet. It's inside of the property line, and since there's no plans for Caltrans to expand Mineral King, there's no danger of that disrupting any of Caltrans' plans.
It's within 20 feet of the center line?
Um...
That would put it right on the road, wouldn't it?
I'm sorry, 15 feet of the property line.
Okay.
Yeah. My apologies.
I still don't know what that number is from the center of the road. How far away?
I don't have it from the, from the center line, but outside of the right-of-way from the property inside is two feet and four feet from inside the property.
So it's just inside the property line?
Correct, which is also outside of the right-of-way since there's plans to expand. Staff are recommending that commission in one motion approve the categorical exemption consistent with the California Environmental Quality Act and the state SEQA guidelines pursuant to Title 14 California Environmental Quality Act, section 15305 plus five pertaining to minor alterations to land use limitations and conditionally approve zone variance number
I have a question maybe for staff. If we allow this variance, could we have a condition that they are aware that is, it is inside the 60-foot setback, and if anything ever happened, that would have that road widened or need that space, because they're only like two feet inside the property line? So... anything could happen. Just a road widening, wouldn't take much. They're advised that signs come down, and there's no crying about it.
Right, and Public Works reviews these and looks at that and often will add that if it's something that's being proposed for ultimate. And nothing was shown. I mean, they didn't have a comment to that.
But we don't know down the road what's going to happen, you know, years down the road. There's going to be an expansion, I would assume. So, but anyway.
Any widening that they would have to remove?
Yeah, that they're advised that this is a variance, and we've given them a variance to the setback, but if they need that land, then the signs have to come out.
Right. That's... That would be fine to... Acceptable to add that language to...
Yes.
The idea of the signs then are the traffic passing on one ninety-eight so they can see those signs. Is that the intent?
Right.
Because I noticed that, you know, Sinclair, which was a back east company for years and years, is all of a sudden, you know, making a presence in Tulare County, and I just... If you look at that corridor there, the more signs you hodgepodge around, you don't take... You really do detract some of the scenic quality, so I think we need to be careful here and make sure that, you know, this doesn't become a every parcel kind of thing.
I think you mentioned there's already a seventy-six station that's close by that...
By Farmersville, it's got the real tall...
The next exit.
Yeah, the next exit has the real tall sign.
Yeah.
So does McDonald's.
Surely Kirkpatrick went nuts over that when that came through.
Yes. Yeah.
And this is actually closer to city limit, so...
It's within the urban development boundary, and did Visalia have a comment?
Nope.
No comment?
Okay, that's fine. And I know the monument sign for the pricing that's required, so that's got to be then. So, all right.
So at this time, we will open the public hearing. If anybody wishes to testify, please come forward. Seeing that, we will close the public hearing.
David, is the applicant here?
I represent Sinclair.
Oh, Sinclair. All right.
I'm Jed Erwin with Vandopol Petroleum.
Name an address here for us.
So I guess we'll reopen the public hearing.
I didn't have a comment. I'm Jed Erwin with Vandopol Petroleum. We are the Sinclair distributor. We're one of the Sinclair distributors for California and Northern Nevada.
What was your name again, sir?
Jed Erwin.
And you're making a presence here recently.
Well, due to a lot of marketing on my behalf. But, yes, Sinclair came... We've actually brought Sinclair to California to offer gas station owners the opportunity to be able to provide a lower-priced product for the consumer base. On average, it can provide, compared to seventy-six or shell, you know, fifteen to twenty cents a gallon cheaper fuel pricing, so.
Thank you. Any questions? Thank you very much.
Yeah, my question really wasn't for Mr. Erwin. It was really for the applicant. I wanted to make sure the applicant knew that if we gave them this variance, that they understood that they were in the setback area, and if they ever needed that background, that the signs were coming out. I was just going to ask him if...
So we will reclose the public hearing. entertain a motion to accept or deny.
I'll make a motion that we accept and approve categorical exemption consistent with the California Environmental Quality Act, sequel in the state sequel guidelines pursuant to Title fourteen California Code Regulation, section one five three zero five, class five pertaining to minor alterations to land use limitations and conditionally approve setback variance number PSV eighteen dash double zero one.
I second that.
Gong?
Yes.
Really?
Yes.
Elliot?
Yes.
Yes?
Yes.
Itigliano?
Yes.
Agila?
Yes. Before we go to item F, we're going to take a short little break.
I was just going to request that.
Back at...
The county.
He just wanted to make an entrance.
County shouldn't print that out of county, but they do.
Okay, we will reconvene.
Let's do it.
We have item F, which is zone changes to section fifteen point three pertaining to cannabis activities for county.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman.
Back from recess is Mr. Chuck Przybalski.
Thank you. Today before you, good morning, Mr. Chairman, members of the Planning Commission, Chuck Przybalski, Tulare County Resource Management Agency. It's an update to section fifteen point three of the zoning ordinance in regards to... The request before you today is a recommendation to the Board of Supervisors to repeal the old section fifteen point of the zoning ordinance, add the new section fifteen point three, and to adopt the categorical exemptions for the project. And we'll go over that a lot later. So as an introduction to this, the county previously enacted permanent ordinances to regulate marijuana. However, state laws have radically transformed in the last three years, and therefore, the county adopted a couple interim ordinances and not permanent ordinances, and the county's ordinances have not been amended to address the recent state law. So a little background history, federal law, it's illegal. That's all that says on there. Federal Controlled Subsects Act twenty-one, whatever that is. Okay. So a brief history of the state law, which is a lot more confusing. So Proposition two fifteen in November nineteen ninety-six basically gave exempted medical marijuana patients and primary caregivers from state law. So there's no right to cultivation, no public... They can't be a public nuisance, and local jurisdictions retain the land use authority to govern marijuana users. SB four twenty Medical Marijuana Program Act of January two thousand and four basically created identification card programs, which were limited to collective and cooperatives, limited criminal exemptions, attempted to clarify the previous proposition, but however, the state still had no clear regulatory structure for marijuana activities. Another law, Medical Cannabis Regulation and Safety Act, September twenty fifteen. This had licensing and regulations, and they were supposed to have licenses that were anticipated in January first twenty eighteen, which I don't think ever happened. Another proposition, this is the new one, or one of the new ones, in November twenty sixteen, Proposition sixty-four, adult use of marijuana, which decriminalized the planting, cultivation, harvesting, drying, and processing of up to six marijuana plants in or upon the grounds of a private residence. And then again, licensing and regulation of for-profit commercial activity. Then Senate Bill ninety-four Medicinal and Adult Use Cannabis Regulation and Safety Act, June twenty seventeen. This repealed most of the MCRSA, which is, I think, was the second slide of the long state list, and maintained the dual licensing and regulatory structure. And this allowed businesses to cultivate, distribute, transport, store, manufacture, process, and/or sell both medicinal and adult-use cannabis and products. We have more state history. Twenty seventeen, state began issuing temporary state licenses for jurisdictions that authorized commercial cannabis activities. However, they only have adopted emergency regulation, and they're still working on the permanent regulations. As of this time, no temporary licenses have yet to be issued in Tulare County because of Tulare County's interim ordinances. The county, under SB two forty-four, cities and counties regain authority to regulate commercial cannabis in their jurisdiction. This includes imposing local zoning and land use requirements. That's essentially what section fifteen point three is. So pursuant to the... And the California... This just says the California Constitution basically backs it up, that we have the authority to make land use and zoning decisions on cannabis, as long as it doesn't conflict with state law and it promotes health, public health and safety and welfare of its residents. So this section, Part Five of the Tulare County Ordinance Code, allows qualified patients and individuals with identification cards to cultivate a limited number of marijuana. Outdoor cultivation is prohibited, and there are requirements on buildings where cannabis can be cultivated. It also allows a limited number of collectives and cooperatives, and this is kind of confusing because their state law now doesn't have collectives and cooperatives, or they're being phased out. So there's a maximum of three medical marijuana collectives or cooperatives allowed under the existing regulations, and this is limited to specific commercial and manufacturing zones, C-two, C-three industrial zones, and it has to be approximately one thousand feet radius from sensitive uses, schools. After the passage of MCRSA, the county adopted interim ordinance, which basically prohibited the establishment of new or expanding medical marijuana entities, including collectives and cooperatives. It also prohibited the issue of any building permits, occupancy permits, license, or other land use entitlements. However, this portion will expire on August fourteenth, twenty eighteen. After Proposition sixty-four on December sixth, twenty sixteen, the board adopted another urgency interim ordinance. This interim ordinance prohibits commercial non-medical marijuana activities, outdoor non-medical marijuana cultivation, and indoor cultivation of non-medical marijuana unless it complies with reasonable regulations. This will expire on December first, twenty eighteen. So for this particular project, this ordinance changes will clarify which medicinal and adult-use cannabis activities are permissible under our ordinance. Basically maintains the status quo of the interim ordinances with respect to the number of cannabis entities that are currently operating in the county, and the types of commercial, that means everything, cannabis activities that can be undertaken in the county. It does not legalize any activity that would be illegal under state or federal law, which is kind of an oxymoron.
Question or...
What does that mean?
Sure. Status quo with respect to the number of cannabis business entities that are currently operating, that's three?
It allowed for three. There's only two.
Maximum is going to be three?
Well, the maximum will now be two. It was three, and since there's only two in the county that process, we're just making those two the only two allowed.
So these two are formally medicinal, and they're going to expand their operation to include the adult use also?
It may or may not. I don't know their actual... What their business plans are. But they did operate as a collective, I believe. No?
They're not going to... They're still going to be medical.
They're still going to be medicinal?
There's going to be a public testimony here, is there not? Or no? Is this just presentation?
This is going to be... Well, it's going to the board. This is just getting to you first, and then there'll be...
We're not going to open up the public?
Oh, yeah, you open up the public. Yeah.
Can I answer my question, Chuck? Thank you.
Okay, specifically, it will prohibit adult-use commercial cannabis activities. When I say adult use, this basically means the recreational use of medical marijuana, not the medicinal. It also phases out the collectives and cooperatives, which is the mirrors of the state law, which now requires M-license for commercial medical operations. There's two M-licenses maximum, which is the same, which is what we just discussed, the same as the number that are currently operating within the county, and the state will issue the M-one licenses. There will be no county-issued licenses. So it maintains the zoning setbacks for sensitive uses, except it eliminated residences. M-license would engage in the same activities as the collectives, except for profit is allowed, and maintains the maximum number of cannabis plants that can be cultivated by M-license for cooperatives at ninety-nine. Also maintains and clarifies which building regulations apply to the cannabis activities, and it maintains the ban on outdoor activities. The same number of medical plants that can be cultivated by medical medicinal cannabis patients and their primary caregivers are six mature and twelve immature plants per patient, with a twenty-four plant maximum where zoned for cannibal use. There's also six plants for adult use or recreational use in private residences. Extends and clarifies the county's reasonable regulations on indoor personal cultivation, maintains the same indoor cultivation regulations as Part Five, Chapter eleven of the Ordinance Code, and adds regulations imposed by the interim ordinances that the board approved. It also complies with the requirements outlined in the new Part Five, Chapter eleven of the Ordinance Code. Basically, unpermitted, some of the problems were unpermitted, drawing and prohibit water, portable fire extinguishers, ensuring they have secure access, ensuring their contact information and sheriff consent forms. It also prohibits the consumption of marijuana at a county fair or district. Clarifies that cannabis is not an agricultural product for the purposes of the zoning ordinance, because the state law basically says it's agriculture. However, our interpretation of our zoning ordinance, it's not considered agriculture. Potential dangers posed by cannabis, and particularly unregulated cannabis activities, some of the criminal issues, since cannabis is still illegal under federal law, it's still a high street value. Cannabis businesses aren't allowed to use banks for loans, or so they have a lot of cash on hand. Most California cannabis is actually grown for export, which is illegal under federal law. So we're essentially growing too much cannabis in the state for the local population. Also ordered odors, nuisance, alerting people to presence of cannabis, potential crimes. Some more, the dangers to youth, particularly rated to increase accessibility. There's several articles listed here I won't go over, but... Some more, there's also environmental impacts, people drawing sources of water illegally, discharge of sediments and pesticides onto the fertilizers, rodenticides, and leaving trash and human waste, et cetera, on site. There's also traps, illegal grows, impacts on species affected by the pesticides and rodenticides, and a lot of the farms are actually on hillsides, so there can be a lot of erosion. This basically iterates. There's articles that iterate what I just said.
Is your disclaimer portion of your...
Pretty much. Please see these. So potential dangers, again, indoor cannabis, there's fire hazards, hazards to adolescents having access not only to the plants, but to the pesticides or besides, and other things used in growing, hazards to the landowners. So if a property owner does not allow cannabis on their property, but the tenants do it without their consent, there's criminal liability and forfeiture. So it has potential impacts on property values. Planning Commission takes notice of the findings. Oh, what the heck. Excuse me for a second there. Oh, and what I was just saying. Sorry about that. Oh, and what I was just saying, sorry about that. All those previous slides about the environment and, and the health and the safety dangers, were all presented to the board of supervisors during the interim ordinance, public hearings. Two is the appropriate number of licenses based on the dangers associated with concentrating large amounts of cannabis in one area, the low number of actual cardholders, the ability of residents to cultivate themselves for recreational use, experience with current collectives and low number of inquiries, that's why we believe two is probably the most appropriate. There's also the possibility, there's an article in the Farmersville Sun Gazette, or Farmersville can't even get there to open. There's nobody wants to open a, a collective in Farmersville. That's the article, which can't see, but so this is gonna be environmental exemptions, there's three of them that we're proposing, a non-project exemption, the general rule exemption, and class eight categorical exemption, fifteen three oh eight and fifteen three seventy-eight. The agenda item actually goes into extreme detail of why we chose these three exemptions. Environmental, the goal of the proposed ordinance amendments recommended for the adoption hearing is to clarify the ordinances as necessary to reflect recent changes in state law, but to maintain the status quo with respect to the substance of the ordinance. And with that, I have a recommendation for the planning commission to the board of supervisors that it will repeal the current section fifteen point three of ordinance number three fifty-two, the zoning ordinance of Tulare County pertaining to medical marijuana collectives and cooperatives, add new section fifteen point three pertaining to cannabis activities, and recommend to the board of supervisors adoption of this sequoia categorical exemptions. That concludes my presentation, so I would be happy to answer any other questions that you may have.
I need an attorney here.
Yeah, I mean, you know, here's the thing, you know, now you, we want to continue to have the two permitted outlets in the county.
Correct.
That's what the zone, so the zoning doesn't change, it just allows for those same two.
Correct.
And, and doesn't make any provisions to, for others to apply in other parts of the county.
Not in Tulare County. So there's only two, but the thing about adult use is anybody can have six plants.
Well, I understand that, but I mean, we, you, the, the thing that we aren't getting here, the big picture, and I understand, you know, it can be perceived as a law enforcement problem, is that what we do by keeping it illegal and not having it commercialized is that we foster the illegal activity. And it goes up into the public lands and other places and it does that kind of damage you're talking about. And as long as we continue to bury our head in the sand about this, we're gonna continue to promote that activity and then have to deal with it as taxpayers and sheriff's department because we can't have any vision to where this is going in the future.
Right.
Now, one thing I want to say, you cited the Farmersville. They can't get anyone to operate it. I think before we do this, we need to go look at Valley Pier and Woodlake. That place is like walking into a jewelry store. And it's, you talk to the administration of Woodlake and the city council, number one, it's a huge windfall for tax revenue, but that's not the most important part of it. Number two, there's no law enforcement issues with it whatsoever because it's all done in sealed packaging. And if the sheriff's department pulls you over with that package and you've opened it, it's an open container charge. That's the way the law's written. So, and I, you know, I know the board, number one, when we make recommendations to the board, they don't always understand them. This one is just, they just want to rubber stamp the status quo. And I, I personally don't think the status quo is really getting at the crux of this problem or dilemma that we find ourselves in. And to deny areas of the county the economic opportunity that this presents, doesn't make sense to me.
And I think the other issue, I see that it's not allowed to be grown anywhere. But we know that's up in the hills, they're growing the daylights out of it up there and that's where the damage has occurred. And I've said this before, Nancy will back me up, if we just, if we, we allow this to be grown, if we turn our farmers loose on this thing, we could take the economic, clear out of it. They'd grow it till nobody made any money on it. They've already done it with alfalfa.
Well, it's, it's not agriculture, that's like, that makes no sense whatsoever. Because we don't want to classify it as agriculture, that's a value judgment. That has nothing to do with a rational approach to the ordinance and it's, I think staff needs to think this out a little bit farther in their recommendations they're making. I don't have a problem with putting it in another zoning, that's, the zoning's fine. But to allow these same two to continue?
The, just through the chair, the, the, it allows for two to operate. And if, if one of these were to be, apply and get the license from the state, it will be, it would presume to potentially be those two. If one of them chooses to go out of business or something, then, then that would free up another one and it would be, so it's limiting it to two. Not, this ordinance isn't directly saying those two specifically, but it's set up for two existing ones going forward, so there's potential of change of operation at some point in time.
I know, that doesn't seem fair to people that want to be entrepreneurs and get involved in this.
Well, I, just again, to, to the Farmersville situation, Farmersville just lowered their tax rate because they can't, they're, they're allowing it and yet no one's coming forward to try to do it. In Oregon, there's a, an article about the oversaturation up there, that there's just so much everywhere that they're having issues up there as well. So we don't want to be in competition with our cities, if the, if the cities, many of these smaller cities are struggling with their budgets and if they find a way to utilize this, that, that, that gives appropriate access to, to the marketplace as well as to the, those cities that choose to, to do it, so.
Excuse me, planning commission, Matt Wang from county council, I'm not sure we opened the public hearing, the public testimony portion.
We have not, um,
Do we do?
Well, we haven't got there yet. I don't think-
Is this a public hearing? We should.
Well, we can now. I, I, I have the same concern as, how do these two, who, whose idea was it that these two can, that there would only be two and so forth? But we'll go ahead and open the public comment, maybe we'll get some more information. Maybe we won't.
No comment?
No comments?
Okay.
So this was noticed as a public hearing today?
Yes.
Interesting. So I know the council thought there was gonna be a lot of people here. Very interesting, okay, we will go ahead and close the public hearing. And I guess we can continue with discussion if anybody asks for it.
You know, I'm, like I said, I'm okay with, you know, having the land use part of this, but I don't see how we can make a rational decision without looking at a real operation. I mean, it doesn't make sense, at least to me. And I mean, it wouldn't be a big deal to go over in Woodlake and take a look and talk to the city over there. And I think it's, we're, we're at an important time here with this. The federal government eventually is gonna come off the shenanigans on this and take it out of a class one narcotic. We don't even have enough jails to lock up everybody. And it's just, it's just the, you know, the reasonable way to go. All the, lots of states are gonna follow up in this. And for the county to stick their head in the sand for, I think, misinformation, I don't think that's gonna benefit us. Just because they don't want to deal with it.
I, I would just say that, well, we do deal with the illegal all the time, just yesterday, there was another, did you load those pitches? Oh, here we go, this is just from yesterday. And scroll through them, just scroll through them.
Okay, and where was that?
This is in Orocy, I believe, east, east edge of Orocy. Go one more. The guns, go one more. The guns and money and drugs and honey oil and other stuff, so it continues. It's legal, if this person chose to do something, there's plenty of opportunities in other areas to do it legally, but they choose not to, so it's not necessarily that if you legalize it or, or zone it for additional places, it doesn't necessarily mean-
It's not gonna happen overnight. I mean, it's not gonna, just the illegal activity's not gonna go away. But we gotta move in that direction in order to get rid of this.
I understand this is a policy's decision and it's just the staff's bringing this forward for your recommendation to the board regarding this matter. And just the other thing I'd say is that, again, if we, if, if the county does an ordinance to basically stay that remain status quo, that doesn't mean in three or four years, when the state actually does start issuing licenses, they still don't know what they're doing with it. And we can't do an extended temporary any further than we have, so that's why we want to make this. Two years, five years, six years down the road, when, when the state actually has their own regulations actually crafted, then maybe we would be reconsidering that at that time. Right now, it's my understanding, the, the state has been issuing temporary licenses because they don't even know what they're gonna do yet. So it's getting a little bit ahead of the bus.
Well, we had a presentation at the planning commissioners conference about the, from the state board of equalization and they know what they're gonna do. They're gonna tax this. And right now, in Woodlake, the consumer buys a forty-four dollar worth of product that's been tested and the tax that adds on to that forty-four dollars is about twelve or thirteen dollars, it depends on exactly how much. That money is vital to, you know, providing a lot of services for a lot of folks. And here we are looking for ways to, I mean, we have, you know, sectors in our agriculture that could use a little shot in the arm and, and have something else to go to. I mean, there's just, there's so much potential here and we just ignore it. And even if we do the status quo, this two outlets is not fair. We need to add a provision to that, that if someone comes with an application to open another outlet, why, why shouldn't they be licensed to do it in the county? I, I mean, it's not fair to just limit it to those two and not allow someone else a chance to do that same kind of business. I mean, it's just kind of my opinion on it.
Again, we, we've had significant, and just by the tenants here, drop off on inquiries. You know, so the, the act, and, and Farmersville's having to go to the city council and slash their tax rate to try to encourage someone to come forward and, and do something. So the demand, I think two is sufficient to cover the demand for, and the need. So, you know, again, it's not my decision, we're not doing the policy, we're bringing this forward for your consideration to make a recommendation to the board, the board will ultimately, you know, decide what they want to do.
Well, I'm okay, like I said, with the land use, but I don't like it limited to the two outlets. I don't think that's right.
Think going back to the three makes sense?
Well, it makes more sense than the two, but, I mean, this ought to be an opportunity for people. You know, here we are, we, we need to promote.
How long is this, how long has this ordinance been, the, the three? That was in fifteen, two thousand fifteen?
Two thousand nine.
Two thousand nine?
Well, they put a kibosh on any new ones. You know, they put a moratorium on it. We're dealing with that too, right, Mike? Isn't there a moratorium?
There was no expansion, the more, the, the two-year one, the temporary one, had no expansion of the existing businesses.
I don't know, I need, I think we need to think ahead, not just sit on our hands.
Well, it's a step, we need to do this in steps, so. Forward with it.
So today, before the planning commission, it's staff's recommendation, again, to repeal the current zoning section fifteen point three of the ordinance code, add the new section, and then recommend the, to the board of supervisors to adopt the sequel categorical exemptions.
But there's two, two recommendations.
Actions?
Well, it's just a recommend, it's just a recommendation to the board of supervisors.
Two motions, right? Or is it and recommended?
I, I think it's one, but-
Oh, one? We're asking a technical question?
Just, just read it all into the record before you-
Okay, so we don't have to.
We have a motion? Proposal, make it different?
Do you want one or two?
Let's have two, let's have two.
All right, we'll, two, make it two.
I know this is just more or less strengthening it up so that it, it's stating with the new ordinances and stuff, but I'm not illegal, I don't even feel qualified to make this. I, you know, I'm, we, we didn't even get the, there are so many ramifications for this. There is a very good point here, but then there's the ramifications of it, that we're not, you know, nobody's here to say, nobody's-
I had read a lot of articles on the pros and cons, including some arguments.
Yeah, and we've read them.
And there's so many on either side, can't even tell heads or tails at this moment. But that's one of the reasons why we have to come with this permanent ordinance, because the interim ordinances are gone and we have to do something in-
And that's my point, is that I know something has to be done because interim, right now, we're kind of in flux.
Correct.
We've gotta get up to date with things.
Because these are, some of these are gonna expire, right?
Well, they expire, that's the purpose, they, they expire.
And that I'm comfortable with, but-
That's why I say it's gonna have to be steps. I think we move forward with this recommendation and then when, when the state gets their act together, then we can come back and visit it again. As far as the number of businesses, it seems like, right now, the, the, the demand isn't there yet. And so I think we still have some time to take this in steps, give the state a chance.
But everything was temporary too, so you don't know if the, the demand is gonna change, that's-
That's true too. That's true. So we need to, I think we need to step into the water and find out.
Would you like to make a motion?
All right, I'll make a motion here, if I can read this thing here. So we need two motions, right, so I'm gonna start with that first one. Recommend to the board of supervisors that it repeal the current section fifteen point three of ordinance number three five two, the zoning ordinances of Tulare County pertaining to medical marijuana collectives and cooperatives, add a new section fifteen point three to the ordinance number three hundred and, three five two, the zoning ordinance of Tulare County pertaining to the cannabis activities.
I second that. Wong?
No.
Elise?
No.
Elliot?
No.
DS?
Yes.
Pique Leano?
Yes.
Aguilar?
Yes.
What's the number?
Six, three, and three, yeah. Okay, so do we, that, so it does not, does not pass, do we have another, another motion?
Does somebody recommend something?
How do we get, how do we get more information to act on in this? What's appropriate, Mike?
My personal feeling, or?
Um, I, you know, I, I think what we've shown here is, is the reasoning and bringing it forward is because of the time consideration and because the state doesn't have their program together.
We can't blame everything on the state, we do that on everything.
I'm not blaming anything on the state, sir, I'm, I'm just saying that that's in flux. We cannot, if, if we had the option to say, let's continue this for one more year, the status quo, we don't have that option, that's why we have to do the ordinance change. And, because we, we don't have the option to do another extension of an urgency ordinance for two years. We've, we've done that, we need to do an ordinance, we need to act via an ordinance as opposed to a temporary ordinance.
No, we need to pass community plans to-
Is there any additional language somebody would add to make it a yes vote?
Wouldn't want my motion. I make a motion, we follow the federal law. And the law prohibits cultivation and distribution of marijuana. I'm in, I'm in total disagreement with the state of California on this. That's why we're down on the border trying to build walls and stop drugs. I don't understand this at all, that's, that's my opinion. So you can do whatever you want to do with it. But we have a dichotomy of laws here.
Tells me we're not going to get Wayne's vote. But is there a second to Wayne's vote?
I mean, that's just, I put my, what I think.
It would just be an undecided or split vote to the board, essentially.
Yeah. Say that again?
Uh, your vote today would essentially be a split vote or undecided vote when it is presented before the board of supervisors.
Oh, he would still go forward?
Yeah. You're making a recommendation of the board, and so, the board will understand if it's a split vote or, or the situation. They'll understand what the planning commission is, and we can move it forward.
Okay. All right.
And, and the other thing is I would, we still need to take a...
The second one, right?
A second.
Okay.
Okay, so we can move, make the recommendation with a three-three?
The rec, well, we'll just say that the, the vote was three-three on it. Actually, technically, it's a denial because it's, if it's a...
Just no recommendation?
There's no recommendation.
Okay, I can live with that.
All right, then I'd recommend the second part. I'd recommend to the board of supervisors.
Can you, can you recommend the second part without having the first one? That's kind of interesting.
Uh, I, I don't know. I, I suppose so because it's, it's the ordinance change. I'd have to look for council's opinion on that, but, you know, if you think the sequel wise, it's, it's fine. I would think that, that, for the, my personal opinion would be you can take an action on both. And I think we've done it in the past. For the Three Rivers Community Plan, it was unanimous that the environmental document was approved, and then there was some differences on other components of it, so.
Okay, so go ahead. Sorry about that.
All right. So, this is, yeah, this is to recommend that the, that the sequel process is satisfactory, right?
Yeah, for sequel, for the category exemption.
I'll recommend to the board supervisors adoption of the sequa categorical exemptions and repeal and addition to new section 15.3, ordinance 352, zoning ordinance of Tulare County pertaining to cannabis activities, so.
So, in other, in other words, just for clarification, what you're, you're saying that, you know, I, I think that the discussion here, at least on the surface, is basically the number of, 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 available commercial activity. So, but with the project, if you're looking at this the way it's proposed for the cat exempt, you, you're proving the cat exempt for what was being proposed.
You proved one thing.
Yeah.
And as a recommendation, it's just one project, but...
Is there a second? There's no second, so then that...
All right, so fails, okay.
All right. Motion failed.
Motion failed, okay.
Lack of second.
I think we need more information, Steph.
Let's move on to the director's report then.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Chuck.
The board, yesterday, approved the Anderson Village Hash Farms subdivision, specific plan up near Kingsburg, so that's moving forward. There still needs to be some components of that worked out for a lot of moving pieces still, but subsequently, they've approved that. Three Rivers Community Plan was approved yesterday as well. The board considered and took action on, on that. They, they looked separately at the initiation of the Oak Ordinance at this time, and they denied that. And they not approved the allocation of 5% TOT to the CSD either. So, they, they took those as separate matters and, and didn't move forward on those. There's a ribbon cutting tomorrow at D-39 Bridge up in Traver. So, that's at nine o'clock tomorrow, tomorrow morning, if you want to go up there. I believe there's, it's a, it's a nice, it's a smaller bridge, but it's a nice and important bridge. It's on the on-ramp to 99 out of, it's the north on-ramp out of, out of Traver. So, that's nine o'clock tomorrow morning.
That's a nice jump, yes.
What about that, that care facility in Tulare? Has that gone to the board or no?
Oh, yeah, that went to the board. The appeal went to the board, and the board denied the appeal from your decision at a, on a four to one vote. Yeah. So, they're moving forward with that as well. And that's where we're at. That's, that's about all I got. We've been so swamped lately with all the community plans and the, and the hash project and others, so.
Michael, is there a scoping meeting on the, the...
Scoping meeting?
That tomorrow?
I can give an update. Hector Garrett, chief environmental planner, regarding the scoping meeting for the proposed Springville Dollar General draft EIR that we were going to be preparing, the scoping meeting has been rescheduled. Originally had been scheduled for tomorrow. It will be now conducted on July 11th. So, that will be on the day that your commission meets, but it will be at one o'clock in the afternoon at RMA, the main conference room. So, you'll all be getting a notice of that likely today. So, that, that should go forward. It also changed the, the deadline for comments regarding the notice of preparation from July 13th to July 27th.
And just as a follow-up to that, yesterday, the board took action to rescind all of the approvals that were done. It's kind of cleaning the slate to move forward on the Dollar General EIR. That was a formality that needed to be done as part of the, the, the legal proceedings. So, it kind of cleans the slate, and now the EIR goes, is going forward.
So, it'll have to come back again, everything?
Yeah, everything will come back through, yeah.
It's going to come back in the form of an environmental impact report versus the negative declaration that it initially went out on, which you, of course, know is a more robust document and more based on, on strong evidence, substantial evidence, important facts. And it will primarily, the two of the, the issues that were, were brought about regarding it that we're going to focus on would be urban decay, and the other would be water quality slash supply.
I don't think I could leave today without making a comment on the proceedings on the Three River Plan. And it was really interesting because a lot of things, I didn't say anything. A couple of people from Three Rivers spoke up. But the, the thing that I noticed is, number one, this planning commission should really be commended because we speak from a position of a lot of information, and I think we really do a really good job. And I understand that this is elected people, and they're all at different levels of their understanding. But one thing they did not understand was the two recommendations that we made as a part of the community plan. And it was apparent because, number one, Chairman Worthley said, what the heck is the planning commission doing making recommendations, you know, about the community plan? They were like really surprised at that. And then, number two, Crocker, you know, who made an opening statement, said that the first plan of Three Rivers was done in 1980, and it took 12 years to do that one. It had 180 pages. This one started in 2014, and it had 3,000 pages, so we must be making progress. You know, and we're, all of us that know in Three Rivers know that that plan's, we started working on that plan in 2002, 2003, 2004. But I know that was before, that's when Crocker was in Strathmore High School, so, you know, it's okay, you know, and I understand, but they really depend a lot on staff. And when they asked Dave Bryant yesterday, well, what's the amount of TOT collected in Three Rivers? Dave Bryant told them a million dollars. Well, in 2015, when Rita Woodard made her presentation in Three Rivers, she told us that year was a million five in Three Rivers. It's way more than that now because we've grown and people paying it. And then, Dave Bryant also said that half of that, the other half of the TOT that's collected in the county comes from elsewhere, so it's 50/50. That is not true information. So, there was some misinformation there, and, you know, Dave did a great job, you know, outlining the vision statements. And I think what the CSD wanted to do from Three Rivers, and they spoke on this, was to make some connection between the Three Rivers people, you know, submitting projects to the county. You know, for, to move forward in Three Rivers and get some economic development. And we look back on, on what the, the board answered, we'll come forward with the projects, and we'll consider them project by project. That makes sense, except that 5% was to develop the projects. Now, we look at the restrooms, and the board should be commended for allocating $250,000 to build restrooms. That took 25 years to get those restrooms. Now, in the meantime, think of all the projects we've had in Three Rivers. None, except for those restrooms. That was the whole idea behind the CSD thing. And the board kind of questioned that because they said this is a slippery slope, and other communities will want their tax money. So, that was basically it in a nutshell. They opposed it. And I think that, that, the message they sent to Three Rivers, and this is what the people told me, was that they didn't think we're responsible out there to use 5% of our own tax revenue to plan our future. So, anyway, that's how it turned out, and they easily, you know, kiboshed the two recommendations. But just like this recommendation on cannabis, we need to be careful on our recommendations to the board because they're not always explained the way in the spirit that we send them onto the board. So, I don't know, you know, and I, I know staff does a, a good job considering their workload, but I think we, I, I just really commend this planning commission for the thoughtful recommendations they do do, and...
Mike, does, does the board get the same packets that we get?
They get, they get your, they get your packet as part of the attachment plus additional beyond of what happened and, and the resolutions and whatever occurred at the PC.
But they do get the info, because I feel like the information in our packets is very thorough.
Well, they get the same plus.
Got to read it too.
Yeah, you, well, you can't, you can take a horse, but you can't make a...
Anyway, I'm, I'm glad the, the plan is passed, and I'm sure the Three Rivers community is too. But we still, you know, the same thing in the 1980 plan. We didn't really get anything out of that plan other than a, an overlay. And it can be changed, it can be amended, but I think that the county has some responsibility in this. We're, right now, the last hotel that was built in Three Rivers was the Holiday and Express Comfort Inn. We have a huge septic problem with that property. And I think the county has a big responsibility in this to help solve that. And that's it in a nutshell, why we have no other projects. That particular project kind of left a bad taste in everybody out there because it wasn't done correctly in the first place. So, we got a, we got a long way to go. What, what we do know from doing that plan is we want to see economic development in Three Rivers. And we're just, right now, I mean, okay, they came forward, we had a shot at a Dollar General. That's okay, but that's really not the appropriate development for out there. We need to get these projects that cater to visitors and, and things that the residents need. We got public restrooms, maybe, if it gets funded. So, we're, we're moving in the right direction slowly.
All right. Anything else?
All I'm going to say.
Thank you, sir. All right, then we're adjourned till, for two weeks.